Well, good evening and welcome to the Town Board meeting, the first of the year, and happy new year. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's quite all right. We'll start as we routinely do on the first meeting of the month with a monthly statement of the supervisor. This one dated December 31st, 2014. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the supervisor during the month. The opening balance was $2,984,722. We received $370,145. We dispersed $574,816, leaving a balance of $2,780,51. Board, you will see the final page that was just added today of the accumulation of transfer tax funds in the Community Preservation Fund, and that is as of today. It's the last number on the page. So, we're again building that fund nicely and very happy about that. There are no transfers tonight. Are there any questions about the accounting as you see it here?
I don't know.
Okay. In that case, the above is a true and correct accounting of the balances shown in the books of the Town of Red Hook at the close of business, December 31st, 2014. And I would entertain a motion to accept.
No more.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. First, before introducing our guests, I would like to thank everyone for their support and understanding. We've had an illness in my fam-- not an illness, but a surgery in my family, and I wanted everyone to know how much my husband and I appreciate your thoughts and concerns and generosity, and he's doing very, very well. So, it's been a wonderful, actually a wonderful past two weeks because we have felt very loved by everyone who knows us and everyone we know. So, thank you all.
Can I just do this very quickly?
Yes, of course. And Sue McCann has a town clerk's report.
Town clerk monthly report, December 1 through December 31st, 2014. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $2,990.69. Amount remitted to New York Ag and Markets for the spade and neuter program for dogs, $76. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $112.50. Amount remitted to New York Department of Racing and Wagering, $15. And amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $458.2 for total state, county, and local revenue of $3,652.21. Pursuant to Section 27, Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I just have two very quick little announcements I'd like to make. Unfortunately, this one will not make the TV broadcast, but we have a really great electronics equipment recycling on January 17th, which is this Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00 in case anybody's in the audience wants to utilize it. And this is really strictly electronics, computers, monitors, televisions, microwaves, audio, video devices, wire, cable. It's not hazardous waste. It is not paint and oil and home appliances like washers and dryers. And alkaline and lead-acid batteries are also not going to be accepted at this time. But this is great. This is put together by the CAC and Bard College, the Village of Tivoli, the Village of Red Hook, and the Town of Red Hook. And some Bard students are volunteering, and this has been very-- this was very successful last year, so we're glad that everybody's doing it again this year. And I have one other quick little statement. I sent out a notice of receipt of the tax roll today. The bills will be mailed out January 20th, so keep your eye out for your tax bills. If you don't receive it, you can call my office at 758-4606, and we'd be very happy to get you another copy of that bill.
So, we're supposed to look forward to receiving the tax bill?
That's right, yes. I know everybody's happy to get that special letter from each year, so. And also, recycle permits are available again, and that's it.
She is the only person in Town Hall who can bring in bad news like taxes and do it so gracefully that people will smile when she says it. It's a totally amazing thing. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
In my opinion, one of the best town clerks in Dutchess County.
No, thank you.
It's just my opinion.
Thank you.
No, it's not only my opinion, it's many people's opinion. Thank you. So, tonight, we're privileged to have with us the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works of Dutchess County, who is Greg Ballkein. Welcome. And with him is-- I said Greg, did I not? Bob Ballkein. I know better than that. Bob Ballkein. And I was looking at Greg, his engineer, Greg Bentley, longstanding with Dutchess County. Thank you both for coming, and without any further introduction on my part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the pleasure is ours to be here. We look forward to telling you about the project that I know has been on the minds of lots of folks in Red Hook, both in the village and the town. I'm just going to hand out for some of the folks that just showed up a brief outline of what we're going to talk about. So, again, thank you. We want to talk about the Linden Avenue Bridge Project. Our office, since the bridge was posted essentially closed to everything but a very small car back in, I believe, June of 2013 is when that occurred. At that time, we began the process of designing, hiring a consultant, I should say, and Greg, under Greg's leadership in our office, working with our consultant to develop plans for the replacement of the bridge. And tonight, we basically just want to go through where we are with the project, share with the Town Board progress we've made to date, what we'd like you to expect as we move forward, and to answer some questions that you may have, or if you wish to open the questions up to your constituents here, then we would answer those questions to the best of our ability. So, I just want to introduce myself again. Bob Ballkein, the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. I'm here on behalf of Noel Nilly, our commissioner. Noel was unable to attend tonight due to some obligations that she had already, but as the supervisor mentioned, I'm here with Greg Bentley, our project manager for this particular project. And this project is being done through the Department of Public Works Engineering Division. So, I'll start off by explaining basically why the bridge-- why we're talking about the bridge tonight. We're talking about the bridge because back in June of 2013, the New York State Department of Transportation, in their biennial bridge inspection program, cited this bridge as a red flag PIA. That means a priority interim action. A red flag means it is structurally deemed unsafe for traffic, and a priority interim action means it needs to be addressed immediately. So, we couldn't wait. We couldn't do something that was going to take some time. So, as you may remember, the first thing we did was we closed the bridge. That was our first course of action, was to close the bridge. That gave us an opportunity to evaluate what we could really do. Is there an opportunity to open the bridge to limited traffic? We explored that opportunity. We had consultants help us with the structural analysis, and in fact, we determined that we could open the bridge, albeit to three-ton vehicles, which is essentially a pickup truck, nothing more than a pickup truck. Although it's, you know, it's good for the cars and the small vehicles, obviously, it really curtails school buses, delivery trucks, and things like that. So, it's still really a bit of a burden. So, the project that we're talking about is going to address that structural deficiency. The bridge is functionally obsolete and is structurally deficient. The structural deficiency we spoke about, it's functionally obsolete. It doesn't operate like a modern bridge, and people may not give that much thought, but the lane widths, or the shoulder widths, or the guide railing, all those different aspects of the bridge that we like to see brought up to a modern standard, they weren't present on this bridge. So, we're going to bring those up to a modern standard. And of course, another need of the project that we identified early on was to maintain, at the very least, the current bicycle and pedestrian accessibility that's on the bridge now, and if there's an opportunity to expand that accessibility, we would be seeking to do that in our project. So, that's basically what we identified as the needs of the project, and I'm going to have Greg come up and speak about the alternatives that we consider, the preferred alternative and why we chose it, the environmental studies and findings that we've completed to date. And Greg's going to talk about the traffic impacts resulting from what we're intending to build. And then I'll get back up and talk about the right-of-way issue and the tentative schedule. So, Greg, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for your time here with the board. I'm Gregory Bentley. We're working towards analyzing what would be the best thing to do for the bridge. And the first thing we did was spend an enormous amount of time trying to find, could we fix it as it stood? It's an older structure. It's been through a lot, but it's got a lot left to give, but it simply can't carry loads. We can't certify that it can carry loads higher than what it is. So, we quickly came to this solution that it couldn't be saved in its current form. So, we began to examine alternatives, and the alternatives we examined was, the first one is, we always examined the null alternative, the do-nothing alternative. As I said, we couldn't repair it in place. The three-ton loading is not acceptable, so we moved on to consider larger improvements. Second alternative was to rehabilitate the bridge, and by rehabilitate, in layman's terms, it means serious improvements, but saving as much of the bridge as you can. Can we use the footings and the abutments and maybe put a new superstructure on it or something of that nature? We examined that. It is feasible, but quite a bit of work would have to be done to the abutments. There is scour concerns where the water can get underneath and attack the footings of the bridge. That would have to be protected through various means, and the entire superstructure of the bridge would have to come off. You'd have to modify the tops of the abutments and put a new superstructure on it and replace the wear and surface above it. When you total all that up, it comes to about 80% to 85% of the cost of replacing a bridge entirely and doesn't give you confidence that you're going to have a very long life, which is what we want if we're going to have this kind of a capital expenditure. So, then we began to examine replacement alternatives, and we basically only, we did some economic analysis to determine what type of, what we come up with is a pre-stressed box beam solution. We're proposing to construct a replacement structure. We're basically going to build new abutments. We would have to close the road in order to accomplish this. This really can't be done in a feasible and practical, financially feasible way in stages. So, what we would have to do is close, close the road. We would build new abutments on piles. There's quite a bit of deep, not wonderful soil here, it turns out. You may have seen us out there drilling holes and investigating the subsurface condition. So, we're going to have to put down piles, build new abutments, which we will build outside of the existing abutments. The new bridge will be wider than the existing, and what that does is, I shouldn't say wider, longer. And so, what that does is it allows us to use the existing abutments. We would, when we're all done, we would cut them off, and they will provide that scour protection for the new structure. So, it's really just using this as a cofferdam to build the new one. And then we're going to put pre-stressed box beams on top of it, which we lay across, this is a cross-section of the new bridge, what it would look like. And you lay these box beams across, and then we will pour a concrete deck on top of it. It would have new, crash-certified, new bridge railings, and a guide rail attached to it would be replaced. There'd be scour protection stone placed in the stream. We have, so that was the solution that we came up with as the best solution. And then we had a last alternative, which we call Alternative 4, which is basically the same solution, but with a pedestrian bridge temporarily installed across the creek on the eastern side. We recognized that the school is to the south, and residents are in the area, and the rec park is to the north, and that there's a fair amount of foot and bicycle traffic out there. We examined the possibility of putting a pedestrian bridge temporarily across the creek down here in the eastern side of the bridge. There are problems with it. The grade drops down to the creek pretty precipitously from the road. There are quite a few trees in the way. There are utility poles in the way, and there are DEC and federal wetlands all down through there. The bottom line is that that solution to include the pedestrian bridge is going to be about $200,000 more and will complicate the permitting and the wetland impacts considerably. So, what we're moving forward with is a recommendation of a preferred alternative, which is what we call Alternative 3, which is this bridge construction with the box beams and not putting a pedestrian bridge temporarily. We did quite a bit of examining. I went all back through Cooking Ham Farm and followed that road around, and it comes right out, and there's the ball field right there, but you'd need a pretty substantial structure to get across the creek there with the same floodway concerns and so forth. So, we do not have an easy answer, other than an off-site detour. We feel that in situations like this, based on our experience, the best thing to do is to close it and go in with a strong contract and get it done and get out as fast as we can. But it's going to cause inconvenience for summertime, and we can talk about that going forward. Environmental studies, we've gone through a SEACR analysis on this, and this project is classified as a Type 2 project under SEACR through our office, and so there has been no expanded SEACR processing. However, we've gone through all the environmental examinations. We've taken a hard look at endangered species and wetlands. Pre-application permit meeting's been held with DEC. We've defined the, there is a DEC wetland on the east side, and I believe the buffer extends to the area of the bridge. That's all been mapped out and confirmed with DEC in the field. We don't think that it's going to require a DEC individual permit because we have a standard activities permit that would allow it to proceed under that, but we also are probably going to need a water quality certification, and coordination's been going on with DEC on that. The ultimate permanent wetland impact is .02 acre, and at that level, we're not going to be required to do mitigation under the federal regs. We think this could be likely a nationwide permit for Army Corps of Engineers, and again, that coordination is ongoing. We've examined cultural and historic resources, communicated with New York State Office of Historic Parks and Recreation, SHIBOL, and they've come back and told us that they do not see any impact to any historic properties, archaeological resources. There are endangered species on the federal list in this area, and will be examined and implement unacceptable mitigations regarding that. We are going to have to remove trees over three inches in diameter on the project site. The northern long-eared bat has been proposed as an endangered species by the federal government. It hasn't been declared an endangered species, but as a precaution, we are proposing to employ the mitigation that would take place if it is found to be endangered, at least what we in the agencies believe, is that you wouldn't be able to cut any trees over three inches in diameter after April 1st. So, it is going to be our intent to gain access to the property that we need and take down these larger trees before March 31st of this year. And the project does, the scheduling of the project does hinge upon that. So, this is something that we're actively pursuing as of right now. Traffic impacts, we're going to have to close Linden Avenue during construction. Construction's going to last six to eight months at this point is the best estimate. If we can get this project off as we plan to within the next two to three months, we'll have it done this calendar year. We will almost undoubtedly impact part of at least one school year, perhaps the end of this school year and the beginning of next. The exact timing on that, we'd have to get back to you with as we move further along in design, but that's what we are proposing to do. We're going to have to post an off-site detour, and we would propose to do that on 199 up to 9 and up to Rockefeller, and that would be for all traffic. We've got the no-truck that I believe posted for the three-ton now going up, is it Park Road or Park? But we would try and cut them off down on the state highway and run them up that way would be the detour posting. And that's something also, we can coordinate with the town on that and come up with the best solution, but there's no close onsite. Again, we've looked all over to try and find a way to get across the creek. First, we looked for vehicles, and looked like we couldn't do that, but well, can we do it for pedestrians and bicyclists? And we're just not seeing a reasonable solution for that at this point. And we will coordinate with the emergency service providers and make sure that emergency services are maintained. I haven't spoken to the school district recently, but they are aware that this is coming, and the indications they've given me are that they can live with, they're off the bridge right now with the buses, so they're, what I've understood from them is that they just want to get it, get replaced, and they'll live with what they have to in the interim. So, now I'll give it back to Bob, and he'll talk to you about the scheduling, right of way.
All right. Thanks, Greg. That was very helpful. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight that Greg either mentioned or alluded to. The actual section, the cross-section of the bridge, I just want to talk about that because that's kind of an important aspect. The bridge currently has two 11-foot travel lanes on it, and we're going to maintain those travel lanes, those 11-foot lanes, one in each direction. On the rec park side of the bridge, where there's currently a sidewalk, we are going to recreate a sidewalk five feet, seven inches. It's going to be a five-foot sidewalk with a seven-inch or so curb, seven, eight-inch curb. So, it's going to be a full-width, five-foot compliant, ADA-compliant sidewalk on the same side of the bridge that's there now. Next to that sidewalk, we're going to have a shoulder that varies in width from five feet, two inches to six foot, eight inches. It's a very wide shoulder. So, people can walk on the sidewalk, and bicyclists can use the wide shoulder, so they won't be running into each other on the sidewalk, which is very helpful. And on the opposite side of the bridge, on the far side, there's also going to be a shoulder that varies from four foot, one inches to four foot, seven and a half inches. So, again, a relatively wide shoulder on that side of the bridge, too. So, we think we're doing the right thing in terms of pedestrian access and bicycle access on the bridge, so there'll be no limitation by this bridge. The grade of the bridge and the alignment of the bridge is going to be almost identical to the bridge that's there now, so there really won't be any change in the nature of the roadway as a result of it. And the railings, of course, will be compliant with pedestrian bicycle use. It's called the four-rail, four-rail bridge rail system, so that's all standard for pedestrian accessibility. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the pedestrian access. Greg had mentioned that our preferred alternative is not to include that temporary pedestrian bridge on the east side of the existing structure for the reasons that Greg discussed, environmental encroachment in wetlands, cost, the likelihood that additional permitting, because right now, we're impacting 0.02 acres of wetlands. When we jump that up significantly, that becomes an entirely different permitting scenario, which would likely delay this project beyond our ability to get it done in one season. So, for all those reasons that we opted that we think the best alternative, as Greg suggested, was to just close the road, get the job done, and be out of your way. We had a discussion in our office recently about pedestrian accessibility to the rec park, and I know there've been discussions about using Cooking Ham's property as a potential access to the back of the park by the ball fields. There are some inherent problems with that. Greg discussed that stream, although it's easier to cross there than it would be at many other locations because you don't have that widespread wetland area, it's still going to be challenging and expensive to put a bridge up there. So, we thought of some other ideas, a little out of the box, but something that I'd like to throw out there now, and the board hasn't heard of this, and nobody's really heard of it yet. There could be an opportunity that the county and the towns could share a shuttle, basically a van service, where a van service could be established from the Linden Avenue School in the morning, and I don't know if the rec park has like camp programs or morning programs or the school has programs, but we could schedule a van service so we could just simply pick the kids up at the school, bring them over, you know, bring them around the detour up on Rockefeller and bring them back down to the rec park. It could be two periods during the morning where we run that service to get the kids at camp. There could be a noon time run that brings the kids who are in there half a day back and bring the other kids for the second half of the day there, and then one or two runs in the afternoon or evening to get the kids back home to the school. And it could be just a matter of the kids either walking to the bus stop at the school or if their parents have to bring them, if it's more convenient. The scheduling of that van service is certainly a detail we can work out, but the idea could be that the county could provide the vehicle and the fueling for the vehicle, and if the town has the ability or the school or somebody has the ability to simply provide a driver, that could be some type of a partnership that could essentially get the walkers, get the pedestrians from South Endwood Villages up around the other side of the project to the park. And again, this is just an idea that we're trying to think a little creatively outside the box. The county, like I said, could potentially provide the van and the fueling, and the town or the village or shared could perhaps provide a driver, maybe a part-time bus driver that may be employed locally. But we're going to try to explore those sort of out-of-the-box opportunities to mitigate the access issue by not providing the pedestrian bridge. All said and done, I think it's going to be a lot cheaper for everybody to try to set up some type of a van service than it is to build an expensive pedestrian bridge. We built a bridge similar out in Dover in 2007, I believe it was, at Don Taylor Corns and Weet and Tuck Craft Village, and that was about a $200,000 aspect of the job. So, it's not cheap. It's rather expensive. So, that's just something to think about that we're willing to entertain or we're going to try to brainstorm, and we'll work with the town and the village to try to get a better handle on the accessibility issue of the park, but just something to think about. So, I want to talk about right-of-way because right-of-way, as Greg alluded to, is really, really critical. This strip is the road. This light gray area is the bridge that's going to be replaced. This aqua color is the water, the stream course, and this purple is the property that we're going to have to secure from adjacent property owners. Bob Danfee, I believe, is here. Rabbit, I believe, is here, and I apologize if they're present in the audience and I'm only using your last name. It's only because I don't remember the first name, so I apologize. I don't mean to be rude about that. I don't mean to be rude about that. This one escapes me. I believe Massey or Mossi, I believe is the...
Massey-Tansley.
Okay. Is that you folks?
That's us.
Okay. Again, I apologize. I don't...
I don't say name carefully.
Yes, good. And this is the Cookingham farm on this quadrant. We're going to pursue acquiring the easements that we need, and these are, there's a temporary easement here, there's a permanent easement here that we're seeking, there's a temporary easement in this quadrant, and a temporary easement in this quadrant. Temporary easements mean we ask you for permission to be on the property, and when the project is done, we give you back all of the property. There might be some changes. We may have to do some brush and tree clearing. We may have to replant lawns, regrade the property a little bit when we're done, but we give back all of the land that we've asked to use in the temporary easement. So that would be the case for your land. Also the case up here, however, on this quadrant of the bridge, there is a small dark purple triangular section that we are going to have to take in fee. That means that we have to purchase that land outright from the owner. It's not a very big area, it's relatively small, but we do have to purchase it because we are going to be building a portion of the new abutment on that land, and we have to purchase it outright. On this area, again, temporary easement for regrading the property, clearing trees that are in the way of construction, and just reestablishing the grades properly. And again, same thing on this quadrant against the Cookingham farm. So those easements need to be secured before we can go out to bid and award the project to a contractor. We're gonna be working very quickly to try to work with all the property owners to secure those rights that we need. In fact, the property owners will be getting contacted by our consultant who does the property appraisals and the determination of value, and they'll be meeting with you on your property to discuss all of these right-of-way issues. The important thing for us in right-of-way, and the critical path for this project at this point, as Greg mentioned, we need to cut trees down, any trees larger than three inch diameter, we need to cut those down before March 31st, because that's what the DEC regulations call for, to mitigate any disturbance we may cause to the potentially endangered bat species. So in order for us to cut those trees down by March 31st, we need to ask the property owners permission to do that. The likelihood is, we are not going to go, we're not going to be able to complete our right-of-way acquisition process, in other words, securing the property rights, meeting with the landowners, going through a closing, paying them for the land rights that we're seeking, and having all that completed by March 31st. Here it is January 13th, so that's not very long. We're not gonna be able to do it that quickly. In order for us to proceed on the schedule that I'm gonna lay out for you and get the project built by October, November of this year, 2015, we're going to have to ask the property owners for permission to access their property to do that tree clearing work, just the tree clearing work, prior to our finalizing those purchases. So that's something that we're gonna be approaching each landowner about, and I'll answer questions as soon as we get done. So that's a critical path element of this project, is to getting the property owners to allow us on the property just to cut those large trees. That's all we have to do now. We can wait till the contractor comes in the spring to do everything else. We need to get the trees cut by March 31st to continue on the project. As far as schedule's concerned, our proposed schedule is trees cleared by March 30th, we'll solicit bids in March, open bids in April, begin construction in May, complete construction in November. As a footnote, if the large trees cannot be cut by March 30th, 2015, construction can't occur in 2015, because we can't build the project with the trees in the way as they are, because we may have to relocate utility lines, which will require tree removals. We're going to have to set up a crane and physically lift these large beams. These beams are generally gonna weigh in the order of 45,000 to 50,000 pounds each. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. There's 10 beams. We're gonna have to lift, these beams are gonna be 60-some-odd feet long, they're gonna weigh over 50,000 pounds. It's gonna be a massive crane that's gonna set up in the road, take them off of a truck, and place them on the new bridge. We need to have the trees cleared for that operation also. So if we don't get the trees cleared in March, we're gonna have to basically do the project starting next spring. By then, we will have the property rights secured to cut the trees before next March. So that's generally what the project is. I would offer to you, Sue supervisor, if you wanna ask questions or if you want others to ask questions, how would you feel?
Thank you, Bob. I think we should start with the board, with any questions the board members have, and then open it to the people who have come out tonight.
No?
Anything?
Any questions that haven't been answered.
Okay. Okay. And I feel the same, for the moment at least. So could we, yes?
I have a question, I think to do with the access to the rec park. As far as pedestrian is concerned, would that be a possible solution to consider the access from Park Avenue, Abrams Park, reaching the park from behind? Is that the Cookingham property you were talking about?
The Cookingham parcel is actually, was, a consideration for the Cookingham parcel was the access through Willowbrook Lane off of Route 9 directly. That would have been the preferred access through the Cookingham property, but that would require permission from the Cookinghams. It's not public property there.
What I'm saying is that...
Off of Park Avenue, there is another access point.
Right. Abrams Park.
Yeah.
There is a way of following a path.
Yes.
And then just a small segment between the end of the park, which is public property, to the rec park from behind.
Yeah.
So would that be a possibility to ask permission of passage to the proprietors of those, you know...
That is a possibility. We did look at that too. Unfortunately, there's still a stream to cross. I believe there's still a stream to cross even at that location. I think everywhere, basically everywhere from Park Ave, you would have to cross the stream to get to the backside of the park. Am I correct in that statement?
What I'm thinking of is not necessarily the rec park, but my house. So if there is a way I can reach our property from behind, that would help. You know, we are relatives, like, you know, living close by, and for us to go all the way to 9G and do everything by car as opposed to walk, you know, just a few feet in the back.
You're entirely on the north side of the creek, I believe. Is that correct? Your property is entirely on the north side of the creek? I don't, without a stream crossing, I don't know that there's any way for you to get on the south side of the creek. Once the bridge is removed for construction, there is no, there is no stream crossing to go to the south side. So it doesn't matter how far toward the rec park you would travel, at some point you would still have to cross the stream. So I don't think there's, I don't think there's that possibility unless, excuse me, unless there's a, there may, unless there's a crossing that I'm not aware of, a privately owned crossing, but I don't know.
We did, if I may, we did examine from the bridge all the way out into Cookingham. The first place I looked was, could we get onto your property? You know, I thought maybe a temporary footpath out of something. But we can't get over to anywhere over there, and as you head east along the stream, there's no opportunity to get across without construction of a fairly significant temporary structure. So we couldn't find a way over.
When you're talking about trees, because our, I don't know, we have the river, and on our side it's the grass, and then the forest over there. When you're talking about cutting those trees, presumably on the other side, does that mean we would be having to cut on our side as well?
Yeah, this is, and this, on this map, here's Linden Avenue, and the rec park is a little further down to the north. This is the north arrow here, so the rec park is north of you. Here's the stream, and here's your park, here's your property. There may be some tree removals on your property just along the stream bank, and basically along where the existing bridge is, and a little bit further north than that. There wouldn't be much extent of tree removals into your property, really, just except adjacent to the bridge area and the stream.
Giant trees.
I don't know, you know, I don't know if those trees are large. I don't know.
They're huge.
Are they?
They're huge.
They might go on the river.
Well, yeah, and depending on, you know, how far along the river you're referring to, we're looking at probably in the order of 20 to 30 feet along the stream bed from where the, probably maybe 40 feet along the stream edge from where the existing bridge is now. So just up the first 40 feet of that, of that stream bank. So it isn't, it isn't way into your property, but it, you know, certainly it is your property there that we would be looking. And I believe Greg did, were the trees that needed to be removed, were they marked with pink ribbon?
Not on that side.
Not on that side, okay. I know they were marked on these two quadrants.
Are they going to be marked?
Yes, yeah, we would...
I did notice a couple of ribbons already.
Yeah, we were, we were going to mark those ribbons, but again, we can only access your property with your permission. I mean, that's just the bottom line. We don't have any authority to go on private property.
That's great to know.
Well, yeah, that's a fact, and you should be very aware of that.
You were going for the sidewalk.
The only, the only rights that we at the county have to be on private property is to conduct surveys and to collect data. Not to do changes, not to do modifications or alterations to your property, but to do surveys, and that's a state law. We can employ surveyors to go survey the land on your property. We try to let you know that if we're gonna do that, but to take measurements and to do things like that. But we can't be on your property to do any physical alteration without your permission. But we are going to seek your permission prior to us paying for the easements that we need. We're gonna ask you for what's called a release, which would release your authority to let us on there to cut the trees.
Am I required to give you that?
No, absolutely not. No, no. We're asking, we're gonna come to...
No, I understand.
Yeah, we're gonna come to you.
Obviously, it affects how the progress...
Sure, it does. It does.
Or whether it can take place.
Correct. Correct. We will, you know, we have, we have means to get the property from a property owner who is sort of not interested in selling us the rights. Now, in your particular case, we're looking for a temporary easement, which as I mentioned, we're gonna be on the property to do the work, and then when we're done, all the land goes right back to you. We also pay for that, right? Even though we're not taking the land from you, we pay you a percentage of the value of that property, even for a temporary easement where we give it all back to you, we still make payment to you. Essentially, we're renting the land, is what we do on the temporary easements. On the fee takes, which is a small triangle, we're gonna, we're gonna purchase that property outright from the owner, or we're gonna seek to, and they will never have ownership of that, of that piece anymore. A permanent easement, which we have in this quadrant, which I believe Mr. and Mrs. Rabid are the owners...
Raven, yes.
Raven?
That's quite right.
I apologize. Mr. and Mrs. Raven, in that case, we would be seeking to purchase certain rights that we will maintain in perpetuity to be on the property to maintain some physical feature that we may have left behind. For instance, if we leave a drainage feature, a water course, or a ditch, or pipe, or something, we would need permanent rights to get back onto that property to do maintenance efforts or repair work. So we would, we would purchase a permanent easement, which means they still own the land, they have every right to use the land, as long as that use doesn't negate our use of whatever feature we built. So we have all three. We have temporary, 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 a fee take, and a permanent easement. So we have all, all aspects on this job. But yeah, we will be seeking permission to get onto the property to remove the trees before we secure those rights, just because it takes us two to three months to, to get those rights, and we don't have that time to wait to cut the trees down, is essentially what it comes down to.
Sorry, forget it.
Yeah.
On the, on the river, on this creek...
Yeah.
Is that, that is, I assume, I've always assumed, and I think it is correct, that the river is the edge of our property.
Based on our, based on our licensed surveyors' deed research and reproduction of your property line, it appears that your deed goes out to the middle of the creek.
Right.
So, yeah, or, you know, roughly the middle, you know, the creek probably moves a little bit here and there, but yeah, it appears as though the property line for your property and your neighbor, the Cookingham farm, it appears to go down the center of the creek, so you own to the bank and then beyond into the creek, is what it appears like. If the woman in the back wants to ask a question.
Laurie?
So one thing you mentioned was bank stabilization at the end of the project, and since it's not a secret project, is there gonna be a way at some point that we know how many trees are going down and how you're gonna stabilize the banks afterwards?
Yeah, we, yeah, we haven't developed that level of detail of plans yet. This is, this is essentially all of the plans that have been developed right now. We've established the general plan, we've established what the bridge section's going to look like, and we've established what the height of the road's gonna be like over the creek. But we haven't got into the sort of the nitty-gritty details of bank stabilization. We've been in close coordination with DEC, so we're gonna do everything compliant with DEC. They have to basically sign off on our plans before we, before we put them out to bid. So bank stabilization is obviously something that they look at, and they want, they wanna know, as you do, they wanna know what we're proposing for bank stabilization. Generally, they're leaning, with us, they're leaning toward bank stabilization that includes repopulation of species like dogwoods, you know, the dogwood stakes that they, I guess they stake them in the ground, they kind of take root on their own. On recent bridge projects, they've asked us to use those as sort of a repopulation methodology, so that may be involved with our stabilization. But we don't quite have all that level of detail worked out at this early stage yet. We can certainly provide that plan detail to, to the town and leave it at the clerk's office for those who want to view it as the plans become a little bit more developed, but we weren't happy to share that. We just, we just don't have the detail now.
And we always do the right thing.
We do. We're not...
Yeah, you mentioned maybe taking down habitat, or maybe in a future case, would that go back? You know, would you try to consider replacing what was removed?
The .02 acres that we're talking about as permanent impact is with full consideration of all the area that we're gonna disturb and how it's gonna be restored.
Not many trees are coming down.
There will be some trees that would have to come down.
The .02 acres is wetland disturbance. The amount of acreage of tree disturbance is generally what you're seeing in purple. Now, not, the trees won't be clear-cut from all of these purple areas, but, but the large trees that would be in the way of either construction of the bridge, or the crane swinging the large beams into position, or utility relocations, you know, the overhead utility lines that may be relocated. The trees that are in the way of that work will need to come down. When we work with property owners about tree removals, often it comes up that they seek replacement trees. And obviously, if we take down a 60-foot maple tree, we can't obviously provide a 60-foot maple tree in replacement, but we can provide other trees, eight-foot, 10-foot trees, firs and pines and things like that for screening if, if that's going to, if that's going to make the property, the project work properly. But we really don't have any of that level of detail. But there will absolutely be tree removals associated. I mean, that's, that's a necessary element of the job.
Again, in terms of the river, the river is dividing the area. There are trees on both sides, particularly going all the way around. So when, if, if the issue is one of, we are told that we have to chop down a tree on our side of the river, that is a possibility?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
In fact, it likely would not...
Several very large trees there, a lot of shade and so forth, that is, it's hard to imagine what happened if those trees along the river were cut down. Along the edge of the property goes to where the rec park is and all the way across there. You know what it looks like. But I'm just trying to figure out what, it would be possible, it would be probable, I assume, even, that you would say, we have to chop down this tree on your, on our property.
Yeah, the likelihood is, we will need to take trees off of your property, yes. I can't tell which ones. I can't tell which ones, but it's like.
Will I know which trees we're going to negotiate with?
Yeah, what we, absolutely, what we're proposing to do is, we're going to finish marking out all the trees that we think need to come down due to construction. We'll put a pink ribbon on them, we won't paint them, we won't cut them, we'll just simply tie a ribbon around them. You'll be able to see them, your property owners will be able to see them, our engineers and our consultants, we will look at them and say, yes, that one makes sense, or that one doesn't make sense. We could find a tree that is of such significant value that we say, change the project a little bit, save that tree. We do that plenty of times. You know, we, we're not that inflexible, I mean, but.
Well, I know, it's a lot of, obviously, conflicts will come up.
Yeah, but if there are certain conflicts we can't mitigate, the answer is, we're going to have to take the tree down. But, but the first step is, and we've done it on the.
How about the house?
We've done it, well, I'm sorry.
How about taking the house down then?
No, we prefer not to. We've done it on the, on the west side, we've marked many of the trees that we think will need to come down with, we've marked them with pink ribbon. We just haven't, we haven't done them on this side yet, because I don't think we knew as, as accurately, but we'll ask our consultants to go out in the field, mark the trees that we, that, that at this early stage in development, we think would be needing to come down, and then.
Is that negotiable?
Yeah, and then, then, then we have the discussions, and then we say, you may, you may, we may realize that we don't need any trees down in this area, and you may say, well, that's good. We may, we may think that we need a tree up here somewhere, and you really like that one. And we say, let's see, can we figure out a way to save it? And if we can't, we'll say, hey, we explored it, and we may not be able to. But, but, yeah, the first step is to put ribbons on the ones we think at this point, and then talk about it, discuss it.
Is this going to be going back and forth and back and forth? I mean, realistically, I would like to know what you, what you're thinking.
Yeah, yeah, what we envisioned is that we would mark the trees that we think would need to be removed. Our consultants would go out there and do that for us.
Okay, what is the, what is the criterion for that?
Over three-inch in diameter.
Okay.
At, at breast height, you know, that's a three-inch caliber tree. And it being in the way of either physical construction that we need to build, or a construction operation like swinging the crane with the large beams, or relocating a utility line so that we can swing the crane. So those are the things that, that could lead us to say, that tree is in the way. Physically conflicting with the improvements, or conflicting with the operations to get the construction done. So we, we're not, we're not interested in clear cutting just because, hey, let's clear cut, it's easier. It, it isn't easier, it's more expensive, and at the end of the day, we live in these communities too. We don't want all the trees down. You know, we, we're here, we're, we're locals, I mean, I don't live in Red Park personally, but we have projects like this in my neighborhood. We don't want all the trees cut down.
Okay. For me, it's important that there's a give and take.
Oh, absolutely. The first, the first thing will be to mark them, just so you can see.
And then it's possible to say no.
It's, yeah, I mean, if there's a tree that's in conflict with construction, we may not have that much flexibility.
Yeah, I understand.
But if, but if there, but if there's a way to design to save it, then we're going to explore that, absolutely.
I think the ones crossed with the, with the stream is a border.
Here?
Yeah, whatever.
Or here.
The one, the one that, I'm just thinking of the, the way the streams.
Sure.
Divides.
Yep.
And that part. You're not going to be going, I mean, we really don't have much to say about what's on your side of it.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Those you can do almost.
Right, I mean, and, and the highway boundary does extend a fairly decent distance away from the edge of the existing road. As our, as our surveyors, they're licensed surveyors, as our, as our surveyors have mapped that boundary, there are trees on our side of the property. That being said, just because they're on our side, we may not want them down either. You know, we don't, just because they're on our side of the line, doesn't mean we're going to just say, okay, good, they're ours, they're gone.
We can have this discussion, though.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and we're going to discuss with you even the trees that may not even be on your property, that are on our side of the line, but in front of your property is screened. You know, there are three trees that are shown here. I guess there's a catch basin, are you familiar with where that?
Yeah.
There's a drainage basin that leads out to the road, to another basin here. Those three, I think those might be shrubs more so than trees, is that right? They're like, what are they, honeysuckles or something? Those three shrubs are shown here. We may need to take those, we may not need to take them. Granted, they're on the highway boundary, but if we don't need to take them, we don't, we don't want to take them. I mean, they're, they're serving some purpose there. So, so we're going to be, we're diligent and we're careful, but at the end of the day, the trees that we can't mitigate around, we will have to take, and I don't want to paint a rosy picture of that, we're not going to have to take any trees down, because we absolutely will.
In terms of time, right, this is going to be done in summer?
The project, yeah, we're looking to start, we're looking to start the project in April, basically, April and May is when construction will start. Construction in earnest, the actual project.
We're not going to be here all the time while you're, while you're working, I suddenly realized. So as much as it can be discussed about.
Sure.
The thing, oh, we have to adopt that, and, and I can say, well, obviously, we didn't have to, but okay. In other cases, I may say, that doesn't make sense. It's not a question of whether or not it is cute, or small, or big, or whatever, but most of the trees on the other side of the, of the stream are, they're very, very tall. The ones on our side, and the ones on our side out here are pretty tall as well. They provide shade.
Sure.
And I'm thinking, if you chop, if you chop down the tree on the other side, you're also going to have less tree, less shade.
Yeah.
I understand, it's possible and perhaps necessary.
Yeah, and, and again, it may not be. And, and what we'll do is, like I said, we'll have our consultant go out, probably within the next week or two, right? Do you think we can probably get our consultant out there and actually mark all the trees with pink ribbon that we think are in jeopardy? And then we can have a discussion about, yeah, I really don't care about that one, but that one you really want to save, okay, let's see what we can do. And that, that'll start the discussion. Knowing which trees we're talking about, we'll start the discussion, and I think that's where we have to get to now.
Sounds good to me.
All right, great, great, I appreciate it. And I appreciate you showing up, because, are there other property owners, and I apologize, I don't know some of the folks here, but I appreciate you showing up, because getting, getting the adjacent property owners involved in the process and the discussion now, it's better for us, obviously better for you, but it's really better for us, because talking now is so much easier than a phone message, and then a phone message, and then, you know, an email, and an email.
We're going to come and cry.
Yeah, well, we do a lot of crying too, so maybe we'll all cry together.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaking of involvement of property owners, I have had discussion with Mr. Cooking Hand, who has, yes, and who has gone out in very recent days to look at the property that abuts that wetland that he owns. And he believes, and has marked, has flagged an area which would be south of the bridge, considerably south of the bridge. There's almost, there is, in fact, in the sidewalk, a curb cut, it's right about there, and he has flagged that woodland and a walk to, behind the folks' property, still on his property, and believes that we could access the red park somewhere near the, the roller rink area. So it would go in off Linden and curve around behind the property, the, the private property owners. He's flagged that, and I wonder if, when you send someone up, or you come up, that you would let us know, so that some of us could join you and take a look at what he's done?
Sure.
I haven't physically seen it myself.
Yep.
Nor has anyone in this room, but I'm sure there are people in this room who would be interested.
Who would you like us to coordinate with when we make our visit up to, so that you could.
Probably my office.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
And that, we'd like to, we'd like to, we'd like to get that nailed down, if it's a possibility, so we're probably looking to do that in the next couple of weeks, like the next week or two.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm sure he would be very happy to, to work with us. He's, he's very strongly supporting the idea of a walk path, bike walk path, to access that park.
As a temporary measure?
As a temporary measure. He mentioned.
And there will still be a stream crossing, of course, but we could see what that looks like when we get to the stream, or wherever that leads.
Yes, that's right, and he, he said, from his investigation just today, he felt there was an area that, of Bailey Bridge?
Yeah, basically, that's what it is, not the same bridge.
That's basically, that's the kind of thing that you're talking about. He felt it could be dropped in there, he thought the span was something like 50 feet.
Okay, well, I think ours is 60, so it would be close.
And, yeah.
But, yeah, we'll, if there's an opportunity, let's explore it.
Okay.
So we'll coordinate with your office.
Let's do that, it may not work, it may be a.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just point out that the first thing we looked at was putting our 60-foot Bailey Bridge up, we, we looked fairly close to the.
Some, basically somewhere.
Right, this would not be that.
Yeah, it would have, it would have been 90 degrees to the stream.
It's, it's too, it's too steep, a drop there, it's too much, you know, lowland, it's wet, even in August, it's wet there. He's talking about closer to the village.
Okay.
And it swings in toward his property, and then directly to the red park behind these folks' property.
Yeah, we'll definitely coordinate to get that, get eyes on that.
So if he would get eyes on that, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, you'll let me know then. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
And again, the, weighing the expense of all of that with the possibility of shuttle service, we want to, we want to look at that, and, and we, we need to look at that in terms of overall feasibility and everything. Obviously, it's far more convenient for some to be able to go to the park at any time without having to wait for a shuttle service. But in the, in the back of your mind, keep them, keeping that, that as an alternative if we don't find something, that there's an opportunity to explore that.
No? No questions? Okay, we can't thank you enough for coming up.
It's a pleasure.
Great visuals, thank you very much for bringing them, thank you for your time.
We're going to send, can you receive PDFs of this? Do you have a means to post this information on the website?
Yes, we certainly do.
So if we, if we sent you PDFs of these diagrams, you can put those, make those available?
Yes, if you send them to the town clerk.
We'll do that, and we're also going to send paper copies of these, so.
That would be fantastic.
You'll have them in the town hall.
That would be fantastic.
And Greg, do we have a draft design report that we can send up with these, with this information?
Yes, so we'll send up a design report, which is the environmental documentation of all the studies and findings, in more detail than we discussed tonight. So we'll, we'll send you the.
We'll just have it on record if someone wants to come in and examine it.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be available for whoever wants to look at it, and that way it takes them to look at themselves and draw their own.
Through the town clerk who is full-time, she would manage those.
We'll send that, we'll send that everything to you, including the emails with the PDFs, all you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Keep it tense. Thank you very much, I really appreciate the time.
We appreciate yours as well. And we know the school kids are going to be enjoying having that bridge reinstated, I know that's, it's going to be great to have a good bridge there again.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
What's the estimated cost of that project?
Greg, what do we have for an estimate? Is it 800 or a million?
It's just under a million dollars.
Just under a million. That's without the temporary bridge, is that right?
Without the temporary.
John, do you have questions? Because I know you're, you're certainly, as red park director, you are.
You have a couple of those?
You are intimately involved in the impact of this.
Yeah, I was just, I'd be intrigued to see where you could potentially put a bridge, but that gets extremely wet in there.
There's three knots on the three.
Great, thank you.
That gets extremely wet.
Well, I asked.
Ever since Hurricane Irene has really been a very good.
I asked him if he would, if he would have us go with him and let him show us, and he was happy to do that.
Yeah, the ground's frozen now, so it probably is deceptive.
I don't think it's deceptive to him, he knows that land pretty well, so, you know, but, but let's see, we'll, we'll see. You will need to see too, Greg, obviously, so.
Yeah, because as you head east from the bridge, you get out into the central portion of the DEC wetland, which is wider in that area, so it's.
Well, let's take a peek.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, and I stand corrected, I'll correct myself, 936,000 is the estimate, preliminary estimate for this alternative.
It's not too many.
Come to think of it, I do have one more.
Yes, of course.
A few weeks ago, there were workers closing a portion on Linden Avenue, and been around our property for three, four days in a row. Was that connected with the bridge project, or with water problems?
I'm, I'm guessing that that was our drillers, and we were taking boring samples of the soils, so that we could design the, the foundation of the bridge.
Oh, okay.
We had done it before, but the soils were of such a type that we needed to do some additional investigations.
Okay, so was for the bridge project?
Yeah, for the bridge design, yes.
But they were, they were working in, on that bridge at that stage for, about a week.
Yeah, how deep do their footings up to?
A few days.
Fairly, about 20 feet. It dropped for 90.
Wow. Yeah, the piles will go down 60 to 90 feet.
And also, you mentioned that the bridge is going to be a little longer, not larger, but longer.
Right.
Does that mean we're going to have bridge opposite our property?
The, the bridge abutment on the north side of the bridge, it looks like it's going to move northerly, at your corner, it's probably going to move northerly about five to 10 feet to the north. So it's not, not really any, in fact, the wing wall for that corner is basically going to be right in line with where that concrete wing wall is now, so there'll be no, the wing wall won't be any further toward your home than it is now. The orange is the existing wing wall, and the heavy black line is the new wing wall, and you can see that they're basically right in line with each other here. So there'd be virtually no difference on your corner, as far as how back the physical structure is. The opposite corner, the wing wall is here, and the new wing wall is here, so that is a little bit more, a little bit more, maybe 10, 10 feet, 15 feet further back, and that's why we need to buy that triangle property to put that new wing wall on.
It's just slightly offset.
Yeah, exactly, slightly offset.
The material of, of the bridge is going to have rail, so.
Yeah, it'll be, this is a section of the bridge, but it'll be steel, steel rail, the standard, standard bridge rail, which is the, the steel rail, galvanized steel rail. And then, and then the, then the guide rail, the, the highway guide rail will lead off the bridge, as it does now, in a similar fashion, it'll look a little different, but as the bridge, as the rail leads off the bridge now, it'll be a little something like that.
Okay, again, we're indebted to you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, and for taking the evening with us on this nice warm evening. You came north, you should have known better on a night like this.
It's winter in the northeast, this is how it is.
It sure is, this is the way it is.
I'm from New England, so we're used to it.
Well, it was nice to be talking about March at one point.
Yeah, it'll get.
It'll be here before we know it, but thank you for all the details, too. Okay. I think we can.
Can I get to the ones that?
Um. Chris, do you need to break with us now?
Just before, are you having a presentation on there?
Unless there's somebody coming in.
We should listen to it at some point tonight.
Okay, that's fine.[1737.82] Okay, that's fine. Let's, yeah, because we need to meet with you, an attorney client, anyway.
Yeah.
And I don't see anyone here who is, right, I don't see anyone here who is going to bring that topic up, I don't think. So if that should happen, then we'll break at that point, okay? Is that fair? All right. Okay, let's do it that way, then. All right. Okay, so we, I believe we can move on to the annual reorg. Just a couple of little comments I have for the board to know that, to remind you that Ann has sent out a note that there will be a meeting with our health insurance agent on Thursday at 2:00. And Jim, I know that's probably not going to be possible to you, but Bill, if you would like to join us on Thursday at 2:00 for a conversation with Martin Sterling, you'd be most welcome. Okay? And tomorrow night, you are both willing and ready to meet with the men at the Firehouse?
Yes.
Okay. I thank you for that. That's at 7:00 at the Firehouse, right. And I thank you for that.
Thursday at 2:00.
And Thursday at 2:00 here at Town Hall, yes. Okay.
Make sure you do start in Montrose Street.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, we'll be doing that by next week. Absolutely. But that's off.
Right, right. Okay, and the last item I just wanted to mention to you all is that Ann has filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office our tax freeze information. We have certified that we are compliant with the tax freeze as has been requested, and it was filed today, this morning. So unless we hear otherwise, we are completely freeze compliant in budget matters. And that's important. It's important to taxpayers especially. So I just wanted to tell you all, too, that Ann was very pleased, and you should, when you see her, tell her, that she, single-handedly, did the supervisor's report for me this time. She has been working in coordination with Debbie, and this time, she did it on her own. And I'm so excited for her because it is such a, you know.
She was very excited about it.
It's a huge task. That budget is, you know, the whole bookkeeping system is cumbersome, to say the least. And she has really taken to it and done a remarkable job. We're very fortunate to have her. Okay, so, where are we? Sue, you helped remind me that we had information about the Association of Towns. Don't let me forget that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so reorg. In here, we have a resolution dated January 13, 2015. Do you find that behind tab 2? And it's a resolution that we put forward every year. And I guess the best thing we can do is take turns reading it because I think it's maybe too voluminous for one person. So I'll start. The Town Red Hook Resolution, whatever number it is, it would be 1, probably, right?
It would be.
Date of January 13, 2015, relating to annual reorganization. Be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. Regarding meeting dates, regular meetings of the Board will take place throughout the year 2015 on the following days in each month at 7:30 p.m. at Town Hall. And that is the second Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday. Additional special meetings may be scheduled and announced by posting the announcement at Town Hall as required by Chapter 22 of the Town Code and with notification to the press as required by the Public Officers Law. Two, our official newspapers for the town for 2015 shall be the Kipsey Journal and the Kingston Freeman. Three, the following financial institutions shall be official depositaries of the town for all monies for 2015. M&amp;T Bank, the Bank of Green County, and Keybank National Association. Number four, petty cash pursuant to Section 64 of the Town Law, the following offices are authorized to maintain a petty cash fund in the following amounts, not to exceed $500 per officer or $1,000 for receiver. Town clerk receiver, $500. Salaries, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby establish the following salaries for elected officials for 2015. Supervisor, $28,083. Town Board members each, $7,885. Town clerk, $50,690. Town justices each, $16,213. And highway superintendent, $59,533. Number six, mileage reimbursement rate, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby establish the mileage reimbursement rate of 57.5 per mile, cents per mile, for those town officials and employees who incur official mileage when they are obligated to drive their own vehicles on town business or when a town vehicle is not available. For the year 2015, said payment is to be made only after submission, review, and approval of appropriate voucher in accordance with the Town Board audit procedures. The rate is subject to adjustment by the Town Board from time to time so as to be consistent with IRS rates. And Jim, do you want to take it from there? I'm sorry, I'm running out of breath. The seven, under, number seven?
Number seven. Undertaking, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize the execution of a blanket bond in lieu of individual undertaking pursuant to Section 11.2 of the Public Officers Law for the purpose of covering all officers and employees who collect money, including the supervisor, town clerk, receiver of taxes, deputy town clerk, deputy receiver of taxes, bookkeeper to the supervisor, justices, justice court clerk, superintendent of highways, building inspector, recycling station operator, and planning secretary. Eight, check signing, the Town Board of the Town of Red does hereby authorize the following assigned bank checks for all town business. Supervisor Sue Crane, in her absence, Deputy Supervisor James Ross, in the absence of the supervisor and Deputy Supervisor, any of the Board members, Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neill, James Ross, or Brenda Cagle. Nine, annual financial report, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook hereby authorizes and directs the supervisor to submit to the town clerk within 60 days after the close of the fiscal year or such later date as may be required for such filing with the state comptroller. A copy of the supervisor report to the state comptroller and the town clerk shall cause a summary of such report to be published within 10 days of filing in the official newspapers
And I presume you would offer that resolution, Jim? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? I have only one, and it has to do with newspapers. And wondered if we wanted to consider a daily, or not a daily, a biweekly.
Well, a biweekly, unfortunately, is not an official newspaper.
Ah, okay.
Unless they change the law in the last.
Okay.
But it's not, unfortunately, not defined that way.
So would that be at least weekly? Is that the way they?
It's end with the paid circulation. It's if there's a specific definition of that.
Oh, okay. All right.
But that, of course, would that preclude us from putting things in the biweekly or?
No, right, right. Not appropriate, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only thought I had. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have some letters of interest. We have some openings. We have town appointments that are typically made. So I guess the way to start would be with the town appointments for 2015.
Those first two are in the resolution.
Right. The safety officer, I guess, is the next item, and that is the highway superintendent. Is she willing? She is. Thank you. The disaster preparedness and civil defense is the supervisor. And I would like to acknowledge the chair of the disaster preparedness committee there. Is that appropriate? Who is Vincent Caluccio? Could he be a second on that line? Do you know?
You have a very specific code provision.
Okay. Well, let's look at it, and we can come back to it. It doesn't have to be done tonight.
Yes, okay.
But he's, he's a wonderful resource, and I just wanted to.
I just don't know if I.
Now, the emergency interim successors are Sue Crane, Teresa Burke, Jim Ross, and Harry Colgan. Receiver of taxes is Sue McCann. Registrar of vital statistics is Sue McCann. Water rents collector is Sue McCann. And issuing agent handicap parking permits is Sue McCann. The assessors position was established, it's a six-year appointment. It is Scott Hobson, whose term expires in 2019. The CEO of Building Inspector, part-time, is Robert D. Fennell. Director of Purchasing is Ted Cudsey. And I have to say that that is going to change to some extent because Ted is scaling back on his responsibilities, and Linda is picking up some of those responsibilities. But we'll leave it as it states for now. The animal control officer is Stephanie Fitzpatrick. The panda representative is Mary Ann Harvey. The alternate is Mark Durand. Buildings and grounds is the supervisor and the highway superintendent. Justice clerks, part-time, are Nancy Robertson, Catherine Fell. Attorneys for the town are Rodenhausen Shaw, LLP, Christine Shaw, lead. Town engineers are Crawford and Associates. The supervisors' appointments, deputy supervisor is James Ross. Budget officer is Rose Ryder. Secretary to the Town Board and supervisor is Linda Stoddard. Town historian is Winthrop Baldridge. An assistant to the town historian is Patsy Vogel. Town appointments are deputy town clerk, Claire Horst. Deputy registrar of vital statistics, Claire Horst. And deputy receiver of taxes, Claire Horst. Highway superintendent appointments are the deputy superintendent of highways is Richard Schlomer. The highway secretary is Carol Thomason. The assistant, now, this is interesting, the assistant budget officer is Ann Conway.
Well.
Let's see, how does that work? That's, she is the bookkeeper to the supervisor. I didn't realize we had that title. I'm going to, I'm going to hold on that assistant budget officer. I just don't recall that title being, where did that come from? Did we know?
Well, it's Debbie.
Oh, Debbie's, Debbie.
Maybe it's a.
Yeah, I know who it is. I know who it is. I just don't remember the title. I thought it was, I thought it was, it just doesn't feel to me that that was the appropriate.
That doesn't sound like the right title that you.
It doesn't feel like that's the right title. I don't think that's right. I think she assumed, she assumed a position that was open for the time being, and I'm just going to have to leave that open. If we can just not, not fill that until I can investigate that because I just don't think that's the correct title.
So if we do a motion for the whole thing, we're, right now, we have the second in line with the disaster preparedness.
Yes, and this assistant budget officer is a question of title.
Yeah, actually, on the disaster prep, I think that my notes say that under Town Book Chapter 60, there's a supervisor appointment for designated for disaster preparedness. So you actually have, I mean, there's a few budget officer and that one are your appointments.
Okay.
So you could do that individually.
Okay.
A board approval on that designated.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
That's what that.
Okay, and I did recall the conversation I had with Dutchess County personnel regarding Debbie's role as she was helping train Ann. And the position was senior clerk, I believe, is the Dutchess County personnel title. Now, I don't know about this title, but I know senior clerk would be safe there because that was a vacancy that she could fill at the time. So I prefer to put that in rather than assistant budget officer. Deputy assessor, part-time, is Diana Pichiano. Transfer station operators, T.J. Hackett. Solid waste attendants, William Zegathie and Nicole Powellis. Maintenance grounds and grounds keeper, Tom Peters, Don Whipple. And there is some question, I think Howie Callis is also.
Well, this had been put on hold, I think, last year, if I'm not mistaken.
Maintenance and grounds keeper?
Yes, that's why it's been bold.
I see.
Yes.
Hmm.
I don't think there was a question.
And John's not here to answer that question.
Right, because there was questions.
Yes.
Remember, that happened last year? Yes, so that.
Okay, well, let's, if we could leave that open along with the, I guess that would be the only one open now because we settled the question of the.
Senior clerk.
Yeah, the emergency disaster preparedness and the senior clerk.
So you want to incident also next to disaster preparedness?
I will do that as just a.
Aside, okay.
Aside, yeah. And the recreation park and program director is John Keown. Bill O'Neill, could you take the second page, please?
The water district leader, leaders, part-time, Cynthia Files, John Wittenberg, and Chris Gifford. The town physician, Northern Dutchess Hospital. Attorney for planning, Keenan Bean. Water district operator, VRI Environmental Services, Inc. Computer software, software consulting associates. Planner, Green Plan, Inc. Town CPA, Lori Doty. Custodial services, Pollards Cleaning Service. Police and court attendants, Village of Red Hook Police Department and Dutchess County Sheriff's Office.
I think that's attorney for planning board, right? I think there's a word missing there.
Yes, probably so. Mm-hmm, yes, please. Sorry, Bill.
I think those are the appointments, and then I think you want to stop there and review.
Oh, okay.
Will you approve?
So if we could, I would like to resolve to approve the above. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And that was as the notes we.
As the, as we had discussed, right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The Town Board voting announced that any all-town committee appointees must be residents or property owners of the Town of Red Hook unless otherwise required by law or Town Code. Miscellaneous meetings, that should be 2015. Town Board regular meetings, 7:30 p.m., second Tuesday. Regular business meeting, fourth Wednesday. Committee report workshop, regular meeting. Monthly and annual reports to the Town Board. Department heads and committee chairs, minutes or report monthly by noon on the Friday before the second board meeting of the month. Annual committee and departmental reports shall be submitted by noon on the Friday before the second board meeting of February. The CAC is required to present an annual report by April 1. The Recreation Commission is required to present an annual report by April 1. Town Board organizational responsibility, the chain of responsibility is the supervisor, deputy supervisor, town board members in alphabetical order, Brenda Cagle, Harry Colgan, William O'Neill, James Ross. Mileage.
57.5.
Is .57, wasn't it?
.575.
.575.
Mm-hmm.
Town departments, chain of command, the department head, the deputy department head, if one exists, the supervisor, and the town board liaison. Town board liaisons to town departments.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Assessor is Sue Crane and Bill O'Neill. Attorney, Sue Crane. Bar College, Sue Crane. Bookkeeper, Sue Crane. Building inspector, James Ross, Bill O'Neill. Animal control, Brenda Cagle. Fire company is James Ross, Bill O'Neill. Highway department, Sue Crane and Harry Colgan. Purchasing, Harry Colgan. Recycling, Brenda Cagle. Red Hook, Central School District, Brenda Cagle, Bill O'Neill. Special projects, intermunicipal task force, Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neill. Town clerk, James Ross, Sue Crane. Village of Red Hook, James Ross, Brenda Cagle. Village of Tivoli, Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neill. Board of committee liaisons, agricultural, open space, advisory board, Bill O'Neill. Board of ass. Board of Assessment and Review, Sue Crane. Conservation Advisory Council, Brenda Cagle, Bill O'Neil. Design Review, Hamlet Committee, Harry Colgan. Disaster Preparedness Committee, Sue Crane. Economic Development Committee, Harry Colgan. Board of Ethics, Harry Colgan, Sue Crane. Planning Board, Brenda Cagle, Jim Ross. Recreation Commission, Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neil. Senior Services Committee, Brenda Cagle, Sue Crane. Greenway and Trails Committee, Brenda Cagle. Tree Preservation Commission, Brenda Cagle. Water District Number One Advisory Board, Jim Ross. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jim Ross, Bill O'Neil. IT Committee, Sue Crane. St. Margaret's Committee, Jim Ross. Zoning Review Committee, Bill O'Neil. CPF, PDR Advisory Committee, Harry Colgan, Sue Crane. Sister Cities Working Group, Sue Crane.
Shall we call for a motion to approve those that have just been read?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now, Jim, I wonder if we could -- I wonder if we could do this. We'll see how it goes, but if we could have those who are liaisons to these committees take a peek and discuss them for us, that might be helpful. Brenda has sent -- in her absence, we have a -- in your folder, you will see a memo from her regarding reorg at this point and her responsibilities for the various committees so we can look at that as we come to them. Ag and Open Space -- well, first I'll read. Town Board Committee Appointments for 2015. Committee Members Are Expected to Attend Two-thirds or More of Scheduled Meetings. Failure to Do So May Result in Removal From the Committee. So the first, Ag and Open Space. Bill, would you handle that?
Yeah, I don't believe that there's anybody who has indicated that they wanted to be removed.
There is a vacancy, yes?
Yes.
Appears to be a vacancy. Do you have anyone who is interested in serving on that committee, Bill, in that vacancy?
Um.
Do you know whether there's a candidate who's interested?
Let me see. No, but what I'll do is ask the committee.
Okay. Okay. If you could -- so there is a vacancy, just for the public's sake, there is a vacancy on the Agriculture and Open Space Advisory Committee. It is a two-year appointment. There is one vacancy. And anyone interested should submit a letter of interest to the Town Clerk at Town Hall, either by email. You'll accept it by email or --
Email or mail.
Or direct mail. And that's true of any of these committees as we go through. So there is that one vacancy on that committee. And Bill, you can report back then at the next meeting.
Should we make a motion to reappoint the ones that expired though?
Yes, I think that's right. Michael Grady is up this year, right? And Mary Ann Johnson and Peter Hubbell. Would you like that motion?
Yes.
Bill?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, how about the chairs?
And the chair?
Do you want to appoint the chairs?
My understanding is that they will remain the same.
Okay. They're both interested in serving as Chair, co-chairing?
Yeah, I haven't heard otherwise.
Okay. All right. If that changes, you'll bring that to our attention at the next meeting. Assessment Review Board.
So, excuse me, we're going to include the co-chairs then in that vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Sue.
Yep.
The Assessment Review Board is a September appointment, I believe, so that's been completed for this year. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So the CPF and PDR Advisory Committee, liaison is Harry and myself. And while they haven't met, I think all of these people are still interested in serving. So I would like to, first of all, appoint Susan Ezroti as Chair with Mary Ann Johnson.
And that the Chair is an annual appointment, correct?
That is. It's that is an annual appointment. The others are three-year appointments. And it doesn't look like -- did we not do this last year? Are they all of these people?
They must not have this.
We must not have covered this last year. So I would like to propose Rich Bezinski, Brent Kowalczek, Susan Ezroti, Ken Migglarelli, and Mary Ann Johnson for the term of 2015 to 2018.
Well, according to this, the first three, Rich, Brent, and Susan, should be through 2016.
That's right. It's a three-year term. So it's 2016.
And then --
And then the other two would be 2017.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So Bezinski, Kowalczek, and Ezroti, three-year -- two-year term. No, it would be a three-year term to 2016. And Hardeman -- pardon me. Migglarelli and Mary Ann Johnson, the two of 2017. I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Conservation Advisory Council. Now, let's see. Brenda has on her recommendations, Lori as Chair. She's willing to stay. And the members whose terms have expired are Lori. Is that right?
Well, she didn't cover, like, Sue Ellis's.
Right.
She didn't grab that one. She just said Lori and Ann.
Well, I think it goes without saying that Sue Ellis is committed.
That's what I figured.
So let's include Sue Ellis in the vote.
Okay.
2016, Ross Gould, and there is --
See, now, she says there's two vacancies. I only have one listed.
Yeah.
Unless they know.
Yeah. I'm trying to see who that would be. I don't know who that would be is.
Well, does she mean Ross because she didn't list him as reappointment?
Maybe.
Because Lori's not still fresh.
I know. It's too bad I didn't grab her.
This member that she has in -- let's see, her name here was, you know.
Ann Rubin?
Ann's on here. She's up to the vacant.
Yeah. Ann's been on it. She's just being re-upped to 2016.
Oh, I -- she had two first names. I was reading the --
Oh, okay. Right.
The first I didn't see on here.
Right.
Yes.
I think there's one they can see from what I can tell.
That's what I thought.
So if we could, let's appoint Sue Ellis, Ross Gould, and Ann Rubin for term ending 2016.
Trying to throw these updates at something different.
Right. Okay. All in favor?
Well, who moved?
I did. I guess I did.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And second?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's throwing me that there are only three of us here. I'm feeling like I'm missing my -- missing the voices is what I'm missing. Design Review, Hamlet Committee, five-member committee. And the Chair is up, Chris Gilbert. I'm presuming he is willing to stay on as Chair. And his term is also a re-up.
We haven't heard otherwise, so I think, yeah.
Right. And 2016 for his term. And George Michael, 2016 for his term. And I would so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Now, Disaster Preparedness Chair, Van Caluccio, is a one-year appointment. Richard Franklin. I'm not certain about Tim Muldoon. I have a feeling that that's one I'm going to have to check. I'm sorry I haven't had time to do that in the last couple of weeks, but I will. Richard Franklin, I feel confident, will be willing to step up for another two years. Van Caluccio for two years. Eleanor Troy for two years. Teresa Burke is willing. Perry Sheldon, I believe, is willing. We have a vacancy from the Red Hook Ministerium, and I would welcome participation by any member of the Red Hook Ministerium. Chuck Simmons, I'm not sure whether he or Ken Cooper cover there. I think it's Ken. Do you know Teresa who comes? Isn't it Ken?
I've seen Chuck more than Ken.
Have you? Okay.
I think Ken was like Chuck's backup if he came or something.
Okay.
That's the way it was, yeah.
All right. Then we'll leave Chuck as the appointee with an understudy of Ken Cooper. And the Red Hook Fire Company, that will change this year. That is usually occupied, but the seat is occupied by the Chief, and I believe that may -- there may be election, and that will change. But Mike Lane, for the moment, is Fire Chief. Tivoli, Tom Chrissy. And Pat Hilton Brand, of course, for the Red Hook Police Department. And so all of them, I would like to move.
Should we, for the Fire Company, should we just put Fire Chief or, you know, or his representative or something like that?
We could.
I don't know.
We could.
If it's going to change, it might make sense to say that, right? But what do you guys think?
We've always named the person because when we're trying to find them, it's helpful to have on the list the name, you know, to seek the contact. So do you mind updating it as it happens? No, it's okay. Okay. All right. So let's leave the names in. I think Tom Chrissy is still Tivoli. And if that changes, we'll change it before next time and go over it again. So I so move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Economic Development. Bill, could you handle this one for Harry?
Well, I'm sure Chris Close can appoint him to the 16 period. There's one vacancy, if anybody's interested, in the Economic Development Committee to contact Town Hall, write a letter, right, to the Supervisor? Or contact Chris Close, who's the Chair? Or Harry Colgan, who's the Liaison? And I would think that everybody else, Dan Fudd, Todd Baywright, Laura Pansiero, and George Forelli, would be agreeable to serve another two years.
Jacob Bump, I believe, is on.
And Jacob Bump is on through this year. So my motion is to point the people designated 2014 to the year 2016.
Except for the Chair, which, of course, is an annual, right?
Right. Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The Ethics Board, I don't believe, has changed, and I think Fred Cartier is still willing to stay as Chair. And his term would be a five-year appointment. Bless his heart. If he's willing, we're willing. He always says no news is good news.
That's right.
So I would appoint Fred Cartier, the Chair of the Committee, and to another five-year appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I think you'll have a vacancy there because --
Susan, yeah. We'll have to wait until that happens this year, right?
Yes. I haven't -- she was going to provide us with a resignation letter but hasn't done so yet. You're right. I -- so we can all be thinking about filling that vacancy, and that's going to be a big hole.
Do you want me to fill it to say vacant or just leave her name on?
Until we get her --
Yeah.
Until we get her letter of resignation, I would leave it.
Okay.
Okay? She'll be standing along, I have a feeling. Okay. Greenway and Trails. Bill, how about you? Can you handle that?
Well, the Trails, recommended by Brenda, is Chair Howie Callis. Members John, Doug, and Howie being reappointed to the year 2017. And everybody else, well, John Keown and Doug Struinsky also. John, Doug, and Howie, yeah. So that would cover those who were up this year, who were up last year. So I so move.
And second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So there's still one vacancy.
There is a vacancy. Right.
So they would expire in 2016, you know, right?
Sixty, yes. And the Chairman, the annual.
The IT Committee has not met in a long time, but probably should. And I believe Bill Moore has resigned. I think I'm right about this. Again, I'd like to reconfirm this and come back to it next time if we could at the second meeting of the month. And I'll call all these people. Inter-Municipal Shared Services, Bill.
Well, the seven members --
I know you -- I was thinking it was --
I'm just saying that I would recommend that we reappoint each one who are each is still active and busy with the Town Village and Tivoli work. And except for Brian Prada, if he's not going to be interested, I mean, we'll find that out in 2015.
Yeah, we get to the --
Yes.
Village elections, there we can check to see who they're --
Right. So I would move to -- I don't know what those dates mean on the right, but --
That's when you appointed them.
Okay. For how long?
There was not a yearly --
It's an informal task force.
Yeah, it was an informal task force.
So my motion would be to reappoint as an informal task force for the period of one year each of those members, seven members.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Inter-Municipal Task Force, the Tivoli ZBA, Tim Lynch has been attending, is on the Tivoli ZBA. And otherwise, everybody on there, I would move to reappoint for another year.
What about the Chairman, Bill?
Yeah, myself, too. Why not?
Okay. So --
Are you saying there's a vacancy filled here in the other way?
Yeah. Tim Lynch. Yeah. Tim Lynch has been -- he was on before, and then there was a conflict. The Planning Board, and that conflict is over, and now --
You feel that that's no longer a conflict?
No, they say not. And he is the only, you know, live body from Tivoli that shows an interest in participating, so we have to go with that, too.
Okay. So --
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Jim, how about you do the Planning Board?
Yes. Ben, it's open. Chairman, Chris Kane, 2015. And Sam Harkins, you know, for another seven-year appointment, which would be 2021. And we have two vacancies, the Alternates.
Yes.
Similar thing with the Zoning Board.
Mm-hmm. It would be good to get those vacancies filled, wouldn't it?
That, as well as on the Zoning Board, you know.
Well, we did have one person send in a letter of interest.
For the Zoning Board. Yes, yeah. We just got that, did we not?
Right, yes. We just got that one.
Okay, so, Jim, is that a motion for those?
That's a motion. For, Chris Kane is the chairman for 2015, and to reappoint Sam Harkins for the seven-year term, which is actually set by state law in the planning board, till 2021.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Recreation Committee.
And we're all continuing to search for alternates.
Right, and the alternate is an important board, to have an alternate. Jim, the Rec Commission, could you do that one?
Yeah, I presume, I'd like to see Doug as chairman again. I don't know if he, I'm sure he would like to do that. And then that would be his term to 2016. And I presume, I haven't heard otherwise, that the members, you know, Melissa Germano and Shannon Miller would like to remain as well.
As far as I know, I have not heard a change there.
I would like to reappoint them, if we could, then, for their two-year term.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion for Doug, for the chairman this year, and then reappoint Doug, Melissa, and Shannon for their two-year terms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. St. Margaret's Committee. Jim, this is, you're the liaison to this committee. What do you have for this?
Well, I have spoken to Paul recently, but he's doing better.
I know.
He hopes to be home soon, and so on, so on. And I know he, I'm sure he would still like to, you know, as long as he can, so keep doing that, which is, I think, is a good thing for all of us.
Okay.
And then, as far as.
So, as chair, he would be one-year chair, right?
2015.
2016 as a member.
Correct.
Okay.
And then Rose Zangin would be 2015 as a member. And I've gotta speak to her. I know, a lot of times I meet during the day, so I can't, but I usually try and speak to them. And I know Michael Brown's been pretty good about coming, and Ralph, and I have to check with Rose about Cap. So, I'd like to reappoint the people that are there. I'm not sure Pat is interested in it a lot anymore, from what I've heard from the other members.
Okay, I can't comment, I don't know Pat.
Can we just put it over till we, yeah?
Yeah, why don't we, if you guys don't mind?
Why don't we pass over that, and we'll put that on hold, table it, and we'll come back to that next time? Because there are seemingly more questions there than we have answers. Do you want me to have Linda call about that tomorrow, Jim? Those.
Yeah.
Or do you want to talk to Paul?
Yeah, you know, I'm gonna talk to Paul, so I'll try and talk to Rose and find out the status of the other members, because she's the secretary for him, and she.
Right, that would be great. Okay.
I'll do that.
Okay, Senior Services, there are 10 members, plus municipal representation. They're two-year appointments. Andrew Carr has been a wonderful chair. I would certainly appoint him for another year. And as chair, and into 2016 as a member. Rose Ryder, I believe, is willing to stay on as a member. Don Peterson, I believe, is willing to stay on. Nick LaCourt and Dick Franklin.
According to Brenda's info, Nick LaCourt is no longer a member.
Oh, did he resign?
He must have.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
No, neither was I, but she wrote it on.
Oh, okay. Okay, I see, yeah, all right. So, we have a vacancy.
A vacancy there.
Okay.
And they want members to help with the 2015 Senior Expo.
Didn't she mention Nancy Finkel? Would that be one that she?
Yes, maybe Nancy filled where Nick's, maybe that's the vacancy.
Okay, so we'll put Nancy.
She has Nancy Finkel.
Yes, she does.
Nancy Finkel in there.
Yes, she does, all right.
And Rose, Don, and Dick.
Yeah.
So, we'll appoint her till 2016?
2016, and Dick Franklin up for that period of time. And Sheila Franklin as the secretary. Okay, so I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye, 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 aye. The Sister Cities Working Group is regrouping. And I'd like to meet with them before covering this, because there had been some shifts in interest. I believe that some of these members will remain on, and some may be vacancies. So, I'll need to talk with them, wanna meet with them next. I believe we have a meeting this month, at some point later in the month. Tree Preservation Committee, Brenda has Nancy as a willing chair for 2015, of course. Does that mean she, her appointment is over this year, or needs to be re-upped? I don't know what that means. 2015, it means if she's, it's up at the end of the year?
Yes, okay.
So, just the Nancy.
So, just Karen.
Nancy and Karen Corderet.
Right.
And one vacancy.
And one vacancy. Eleanor Frye is remaining on, as best I can tell. That's a wonderful committee, really, and.
Yes, every one of those are nice, easy ladies to work with.
There is a vacancy, and anyone who is interested in seeing the results of good work, the tree committee is the place to serve. So, please, contact Sue McCann, and let us know of your interest. Okay, the Water District, Water Board, Water District One.
I haven't heard anything otherwise from Hank that is working.
Nor have I. I think these can be just automatically Hank for the chair for the year, and Jerry Gilnak, Hank for the two-year term, and Nick Anis for the two-year term. Nick has been coming, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and Dick Franklin. Okay, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Zoning Board of Appeals, this is a seven-member board?
Yes.
Or is a need for alternates? Jim, do you wanna take this one?
Yeah, I actually have a plan on going over this with Nick tomorrow night, after the zoning board meeting. You know, he's our current chairman. But then, because he had, I've never spoken to me definitely, but I got the impression that he wasn't sure if Ken wanted to do it again or not, so I'm not sure, you know?
I think Ken is willing and ready to step down.
If we found somebody else, yeah, and I guess, Nick, I haven't heard that in Nick's words, you know, the chairman's words, yet, so. And we, of course, we still have two vacant alternate positions as well. Now, we did have a letter of interest that I just received, you know, in the mail this evening.
Yes.
That's the only letter of interest I've seen. So, I think it might be prudent to appoint this person as an alternate anyway, and then if we have an opening, go from there. What do you guys think?
Maybe we should find out what Ken Anderson's intentions are, you know?
Okay, yeah, I thought we could do an alternate, and move him up to a full member, but I can wait and talk to Nick tomorrow, and we could revisit it next time, Bill, that'd be fine.
Do we do it in the end of the month, then?
We can, because we're going to come back to this for other reasons. So, if we can just put this, these questions on hold for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and bring them up again. We know that we have someone who is willing to serve, and whether we slot them as a, the person as a vacant alternate, in the alternate vacancy, or not. I should say who it is. Christopher Mumm has written a letter, interested in serving as a member of the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. "I believe my experience on the planning board will serve me well as a ZBA member, and provide important perspective on appeals that might come before the board. I think it will also help improve communication between the two boards when projects overlap." So.
No, Charlie, he wasn't on the planning board that long, and he resigned for some reason. I don't seem that I'm here and then resign. My hesitation.
Well, if you would explore that with.
I will explore those issues with Dick tomorrow evening.
Okay, fine. And we'll leave the entire board up for the next meeting. It would be good, too, because that's an important board, and I'd like to have all the board members, all five of us here, to make that decision, you know? Because that's of the two, of all of these, the zoning and planning boards are the ones that we really need to be up to snuff on. Okay, Zoning Board of Review, Bill, or Zoning Review Committee, I'm sorry, Bill.
Well, my recommendation is that everybody listed here, who's up 2014, would be interested to continue. And so, I would recommend that Sue Simon be designated the chair for a two-year appointment. That the at-large members are Sue Simon, Chuck Simmons, and that from the planning board, Sam Phalen, the ZBA, John Douglas, the CEO, Steve Cole, CAC, Ann Rubin, Ag and Open Space, Ken Migliorelli, and EDC, Chris, well, Ken Migliorelli is already appointed through this year. But Chris Close could be reappointed, all of them to the year 2016. We're still looking for a liaison from Tivoli to participate in the Zoning Review Committee, and would encourage anybody who's from Tivoli to contact me firstly, or the Town Hall, the supervisor, the town clerk, to show an interest in joining the Zoning Review Committee.
Good.
As a voting member, by the way. So, that's my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Maybe if people want to handle it, we'll get somebody to be interested.
I'm hoping there will be interest, because these committees are interesting, and my experience has been that good people serve on these committees. They are very interesting and interested. So, whoever serves usually gets more out of it than they put into it. Maybe with a few exceptions, there's a lot of work on some of them. Okay.
Yeah, they can be a lot of fun to serve on the committees.
Right. Speaking of fun and work, our next task is to acknowledge that there is an Association of Towns meeting, 2015 Training School and Annual Meeting, at the New York Hilton Midtown, New York City, February 15 to 18. It is a training session for town officials. And there are group sessions for town board members, building officials, planning and zoning officials, town justices, town justices advanced, tax collecting officers, fiscal officers, public works and highway, town clerks, town court clerks, and town attorneys. It begins on the Sunday, February 15. And our task tonight, if you don't mind taking responsibility to do this, I think it would be good, I'd like to resolve to delegate Jim Ross as the official town designee for delegate. Jim, are you still available to serve that weekend, staying over until the Wednesday meeting?
Can I stay till Wednesday, noon for the meeting?
You would.
Yeah, when we talked about it a while ago, I planned my schedule, so I.
That would be terrific. That would be terrific.
It'd be nice if some other members could come for, you know, for a while, regardless, too.
Right. Bill, did you have any thought to attend that meeting? Were you planning to? Because we needed, we need an alternate.
Yeah, not really, but.
Okay. Well, let's see how it goes, and if we twist your arm, if Jim cannot for some reason, would you be willing to go down as the delegate for the day, if not the whole?
I would never say no.
Okay, well, that's very kind, thank you. Okay, so that is my resolution. Resolve to officially appoint Jim Ross as the delegate to the 2015 Association of Towns Annual Meeting. Is there a second?
A second. If you can't go, then I might go.
And then will, I will not be able to go this year.
Okay, so.
So, and then, as an alternate, Bill O'Neill.
Yeah, maybe Bill come down in one or two days, we can go out and have dinner or something.
There you go.
Let me in.
That'll be fine. And so, I would like to, with the board's permission, I would like to, tomorrow, get a note out to all of the staff, to be alert for the program, to see if there are appropriate classes that they wish to attend, because we did slot some money for Association of Towns.
The different departments, we slot some?
The different departments have money. Thank you. Okay, good night, Teresa. The different departments, we do have allocation for, you know, some attendance, and I just want them to look at the schedule when it comes out. I haven't really got a full schedule of classes yet. Obviously, if there's nothing appropriate, they will say so. You know, the staff has been very good about saying, "There's nothing for me there this year that I want to attend." But I'd like to be able to make it available to them if they wish to go, if you both agree. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, for a lot of reasons, for them to spend a couple of days together. So, some of them are taking on new responsibilities. Ann Conway is definitely interested in going. I know the two court clerks are committed to going. I'm interested in having Linda study if their classes offered in purchasing. She should really be taking some of them, because Ted took them for years, and, you know, he really got a lot out of that Association of Towns training. How about you, Sue? Are you planning to attend this year?
I wasn't.
Depending on the?
Yeah, I wasn't really sure that we were able to, but yeah, I'll check the schedule.
Good, good, okay.
I always find it, it's a wonderful event, and.
It is a good event. It is a good event.
I will send in my registration.
Okay, and between now and maybe next meeting, we have already distributed to you the amendments to the Constitution, or the Resolution Committee's report. And there are a lot of resolutions, and a few just.
Did we just get that?
I think I passed.
I don't know if Linda made that up for everybody.
I thought she passed it out. Oh, really? I thought she had emailed it to everyone, and it was here one week. Maybe, Jim, you weren't here.
You had to go through, like, 10 pages before you got the recommendation that was recommended.
Right, right, it's a lot. It's a lot. But if you would like, I'll make sure that she copies all of you. You want the hard copy?
If I could.
And, Bill, do you think you have the hard copy already? I'm sure we did. But I'll do it again, if you want them. There are bazillion resolutions, and they.
Some of them are the ones that probably.
Some of them are coming back year after year, and they, still lobbying for some of them. Okay.
So, then I'll send in that designation.
And so, if you would fill that out for Jim, and get that, I think it has to be motorized, Sue. Are you sure? Did we vote on it? Did we say, all in favor? For officers and, or rather.
Yes.
They did, okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for agreeing to be delegate and alternate delegate.
The date is February 15.
It is February 15 through the 18. The 18th, the morning of the 18th is the actual annual meeting, yeah. And then. Yes, yes, you will. Sue's gonna fill it out.
No, they have to sign it, I think I just have to send it in.
Oh, okay.
With your names on it.
All right, she'll take care of it. It's this.
So, I don't have to sign anything?
No, I don't think so.
This is the agreement, the expenditure file, please?
That's the next and last thing on the agenda. In correspondence, Teresa has attached, please find a copy of the agreement. To expend highway funds, you will be provided with two originals to be signed at the town board meeting on Tuesday, the 13th. Or at your earliest convenience. And this is, general repairs, and the amount of $48,000 shall be set aside to be expended for primary work and general repairs upon 58 miles of town highways. And it's really a blanket authorization for work on town roads. And the amount to be expended, not over the sum of $180,454. I'm prepared to sign that, and if you would like to, we'll take care of that and get it out to Teresa. Does she need all signatures? Probably, yeah.
I think the first is a form, you should.
Move on it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I didn't read the whole thing in its entirety, but.
Was that a motion or a second?
That was a motion, yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to put a date on it.
Yeah.
13th, January.
I have so far been.
It's just three of the signs.
Yeah, it gets unwieldy.
It's really just a voluntary authorization to establish the amount that she's authorized. to extend out of the budget.
Out of the budget?
Okay, that takes care of correspondence, as it returns to this week.
Public comment, if you agree with it.
Yeah, is there any public comment? Hank, nothing? Thank you for coming, and thank you for the good articles about the e-waste, I think, didn't you write that, or someone from your paper? It was a great article, thank you for doing that, it was just terrific. Okay, then.
Did we scare the public off tonight, or?
We did, we did, we scared them.
It's called out.
So, they want to go home, they're ready, bye. So, what we need to do now is make a motion to go into attorney-client. I have a couple of issues regarding contracts, and I know Christine has a number of things she would like to speak with us about, so I move that we go into attorney-client and come back out to close after that. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stay warm.
You too.
Thank you.